This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm going to start with a brief announcement. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question or actively participating. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you are speaking. This system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through and be recorded at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a traditional wooden gavel at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all. So the person who has the floor can be heard. We'll now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular agenda item, please type into the chat bar that you do. If you look at the top right corner of your screen, there's a little chat bubble. Click on that, type a message, and that'll put you in line to participate. Members of the council go first, then members of the public. And as far as members of the public go in participation, I will go through those participating digitally first, whether it's through a computer or a smartphone application. If you've dialed in using Ma Bell's telephone, I'll have to come to you last. If you intend to comment, please introduce yourself by stating your name and your address. There will be executive session at the end of this meeting. I will ask those who are not participating in the executive session to leave the meeting. If you don't leave the meeting, I will kick you off and then lock the meeting. If you are not, there are actually two different topics of discussion for executive session. If you are not part of the first, I'll ask you to leave and then log in immediately, and you will be in the waiting room until I let you into the executive session. For those who want to see the end of the meeting after the executive session, you log back into the meeting, and you will be in the waiting room until we open to the public. With that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Fishbein.
Here.
Laughen.
Here.
Morone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Chortel.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Zerboni.
Here. Looks like all are present and accounted for. On to item three. Can we please have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, items removed from the consent agenda. There are no items that were removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period. If you could please type into the chat bar if you have a question. Mr. Morganstein, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. My question for tonight is on agenda item number eleven. Will there be public comment at that point on that agenda item?
There can be public comment. Personnel matters are not, I mean, other than the pleadings that have been published in that case, they're not items for public discussion, but I suspect we'll entertain public comment.
Okay, and if I might be indulged, I'm not sure I'm going to make it that long, and I have some general questions if I can direct them to the council and the mayor about that.
You mean now?
Yes.
Okay, you can ask them. I'm not sure they'll be answered now.
Yeah, that's always a possibility. What I want to know is whether we're covered by insurance for any sort of settlement over a matter like this.
I can tell you that there is insurance participating in this matter.
Okay, and is there any chance that the town might still have some liability that the insurance might not cover in a matter like this?
That I'm not sure I can answer.
Okay, so that goes to my next question is that when a resolution does come about one way or another, will the settlement resolution be made public by the town? Will that be public information that the town will disclose?
That I cannot determine at this time. There could be language in the settlement agreement that keeps it confidential.
Chairman.
And if, Mayor.
I believe that an ultimate settlement would be a public document. The town attorney is on, he can indicate differently, but I believe that once the parties have signed off on it, that would be a public document.
And would the town be willing to make that public, or do I have to go to the court site to get such a document and the results?
I believe you would contact the town attorney's office.
Okay, but the town won't publish that or make that available for the public itself?
We certainly can make it available upon request.
Okay, and then the final general question on this is that, again, these things happen. Is there any mechanism that the town does a review on these sort of matters? And if they do do a review to kind of go over what happened, is there something we didn't do correctly? Who would conduct such a review?
It would be an internal administrative review.
And who would conduct that?
It could be mayor's office, it could be law department, it could be the department, any other department of the town, it could be the town attorney's office.
And would, again, the public be aware that that has taken place, and then when it's completed, will that be made public?
It would depend upon the nature of the inquiry and far more detail than you've expressed.
Because I think in all these things, it's important that the public have information, and I won't go beyond that because I know there's a lot of other things that you can't talk about public, even though I'm curious about it. So thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have in the chat bar for public question and answer. So moving on to item number six, which is the COVID- nineteen update from our health director, Mr. Civitelli. Are you with us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the council.
Let me share my screen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. We'll jump right into it tonight. Again, so we could hop right to the second slide, Mr. Chairman. That would be great. So we have our monthly confirmed case totals as of right now. So what you'll see is, is obviously the declining numbers going back to November till now. Thus far, we finished roughly with one hundred and forty-one cases in February. There are some still rolling in. But again, for the first eight or so days in March, we have roughly twenty-five confirmed cases in town. One positive note that we've noticed, the trend statewide, is hospitalizations are continuing to decline. We've seen a twenty percent drop in hospitalizations from our previous report to the town council on two twenty-three. I know there was a slight uptick again today, but however, overall, the hospitalizations are continuing to decline statewide. We updated our total number of fatalities in town since the beginning of the event as of three-eight, which are shown, as well as the number of confirmed tests or test total tests conducted in town from the beginning of the pandemic. So it does show that the town does have ample testing in our area. Again, a slide we're very much familiar with at this point, but what we'll notice now is that the state's starting to change color in a better direction. The ninety-five ninety-one corridor was historically one of the areas, more of the areas of the state that tended to lean more red from the onset. So my impression would be as they would be more or less the last to convert over, but as of right now, the town has somewhat leveled off around twenty-five to twenty-six, twenty-seven cases per day over a fourteen-day rolling average, at least over the last two weeks. We're going to continue to monitor those numbers and see if they continue to decline. The assumption would be as vaccinations ramp up in the community and statewide, that these numbers would continue to drop as we're seeing articulated in this map. Again, with lower numbers of cases in town, which we've seen over the last two weeks, we're also seeing lower numbers of contact tracing cases we're actually having to monitor. So again, we're seeing here that, you know, we're still using the Microsoft system in town, and right now, we're looking at roughly thirty-two individuals within that ten-day window of their infectious period that we're keeping an eye on. This is a summary of the clinics that we've completed thus far. Again, more recently, we've ramped up our capacity significantly in our last few clinics. What you'll see there is the February twenty-fifth and the March fourth clinics. We've swelled our numbers well over four hundred. We're scheduled to do more in the coming days. I think we could probably hop to the next slide.
Before you do this, are these running totals, or can you add all these up to get the total number we've given in town?
You could add all these up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and so really, a great question, Mr. Chairman. So those numbers are reflective of both first and second dose shots at the same clinic. So again, that's, you know, as we get more vaccine, we have more second-dose clinics. We're trying to merge the two and do one larger clinic a week. These are the clinics that are scheduled. What you'll see is we actually have two scheduled back-to-back this week. We have four hundred and twenty individuals scheduled for our first and second-dose clinic on March eleventh, and then on March twelfth, we're going to host our first Janssen, or better known as the Johnson and Johnson clinic, which is going to be roughly for a hundred and fifty individuals. And then what you'll see is the succession of first and second-dose clinics that are expected through March and starting to move into April. We're still obviously working with our major partners in town with Masonic Gaylord Cho Allnecks and the Fire Department and the Board of Ed. It's been critical to have those partners in our clinics, and I think our clinics are running fairly well at this point. One thing of note is we have, what at one point swelled to roughly eighteen hundred folks in town that were on that sixty-five and older list. We've now reduced that down to, when I left the office this evening, it was around three hundred and eighty-one. So we expect to catch up on our list in the next week or two and satisfy that group of folks that are sixty-five and older, as well as those that are seventy-five and older. And again, we're continuing to work on that, and our expectation is in the coming weeks, we are going to start to scale back the larger clinic and start going mobile in the community to focus on folks that are homebound, vulnerable populations, those who are underinsured or do not have insurance. We've identified several locations in town that are more than willing to host us, to do a clinic. And again, that's something we're looking at doing as we approach the spring more. Again, this is the statewide map of the total number of vaccinations. As of right now, the town is hovering right around twenty-two percent of our total population has had our first vaccine, has had their first vaccination. So I think we're doing fairly well when compared to our neighbors overall, that, you know, we're hitting some targets, and we certainly hit our targets for our folks that are seventy-five and older, and we're well on our way to, because we're well over eighty-five percent of our town's population that are seventy-five and older have been vaccinated, and we're hovering around sixty-five to seventy percent of folks in town that are sixty-five and older have had their first vaccine. So overall, we're reaching some major markers, and I think now with the mega clinic at Oakdale coming online, as well as more recently Walgreens on South Colony is starting to offer vaccine, that's definitely something that is huge for us, because now we can start to hit those hard-to-reach areas with those who are, again, as I mentioned, do not have mobility issues, that are homebound, underinsured, uninsured, and then we could, you know, really start to lean on some of these larger facilities in town that will ultimately, from what I'm seeing in our vaccine allocations, the larger sites are getting more vaccine, which makes sense. And as more vaccine comes to the state of Connecticut, what we're also seeing is a subsequent rise in operators, which really in turn is resulting in a flat allocation to the towns, from what I'm gathering and reaching out to my other directors of health statewide. So just wanted to note that as well. So I'm sure many of you are aware that the governor announced last week that there is going to be the next phase of Connecticut's reopening, starting March nineteenth. Capacity limits will be lifted to restaurants, however, social distancing requirements will still be in place. There are certain things that are changing for personal service facilities, houses of worship, museums, et cetera. Those documents that we often reference, the Connecticut reopen guidance documents that are put out by Department of Economic Development, they haven't been updated yet, but we're anticipating those changes will be made, and something we'll have to review and evaluate how that impacts us in our community. We also noted the commercial gatherings, and those capacity levels are going to rise, whether it's inside or outside. And I think the last note here that we put in is that indoor theaters will remain at fifty percent, and bars that do not serve food will remain closed. Those are some of the major takeaways from this past announcement for March nineteenth. So we're going to have to try and keep an eye on some of those changes and see how that impacts us in the community. So I think that I will defer to questions from the council at this point.
So not necessarily a question, but one of the workers at the Pistapog Treatment Plant reached out to tell me that all of those workers sincerely appreciate what the Health Department has done in terms of a flawless and friendly operation of getting them their vaccine shots, that it was a very well-thought-out procedure, audit how well it went, and great praise to the Health Department for the way you handled the vaccine clinic at Pistapog Pond, or for those workers. So they wanted me to pass that along to you tonight.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. It's truly a team effort, and as we identify issues in the clinic, we try and make small adjustments to make it run flawlessly. So that's good to hear. Thank you.
Glad it's working. First question from the council is from Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Steve. Nice to see you again.
Good evening, Councilor Fishbein.
So a few topics. First of all, where are we with our school staff, our teachers, in getting them at least available to be vaccinated, or vaccines available for them?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So more recently, long story short, I guess is the best way to put it, the state of Connecticut had sent a survey out to local health departments that were tasked with vaccinating local schools, Board of Educations, other schools in your community, as well as childcare facilities, home daycares, et cetera. We filled out that survey requesting a large number of vaccine, and we did not receive the allocations that we had hoped for, which severely impacted our capacity to serve all those facilities in town, not just our Board of Education. So in talking with Dr. Menzo, we had developed a schedule that was going to span over four weeks, and I'm sure some of you may have seen that, that we put out early in March, or maybe even late February, that the schedule was going to be every Friday, so many, you know, two hundred teachers a week. And with the little allocation we were getting, we had some concerns about how that was going to impact, one, our capacity to vaccinate all of our education facilities and childcare facilities, as well as the general public. So Dr. Menzo had reached out to one of our contacts up at the Oakdale and had arranged this past Sunday to have roughly a thousand individuals between our childcare facilities and our Board of Education receive their first dose of Pfizer. So I can report that, you know, a good, I don't know the exact percentage, but a good percentage of our educators were actually taken care of over this past weekend.
And when do we anticipate that the balance, the rest, I know you don't know the percent that's been done, but when will we be able to say that our educators and our daycares have, you know, the individuals have at least had the opportunity to have the vaccine, should they so choose?
So I would say that the ones that we've identified that did not make that clinic, we are going to try and serve for their first shot by March eighteenth at our clinic. So that includes many facilities throughout town. Cho, Ben Haven, you know, childcare facilities, home daycares, again, some of the other remaining Board of Ed employees who did not make the clinic over the weekend, we're going to try and, again, totally based on allocation from the state, try and meet the remaining number of folks that still are looking for a vaccine. So I would anticipate in the next week or so, we'll be able to serve that community.
Well, I'm hearing that some towns are getting more allocations from the state and are able to represent that their staff, at least their town educational staff, has been, everyone has been given the opportunity. Are you of different information that we're being allocated, per se, fairly, or is there disparity?
It's a tough question to answer. I think what's happening now in the state is that as the allocation plans have been modified and more operators come online, I know that the state's looking at vulnerable populations as well, so that impacts what we receive as well. What I will say is that it's my understanding that, again, over the weekend, we, between Friday evening and Sunday morning, there was an opportunity for a thousand Pfizer vaccines to be had. So that was essentially more than what our Board of Education needed. So all of those who were available over the weekend got the vaccine, and then I think in the coming days, we'll get the remaining list of those who are still looking for vaccine, and we'll try and work them into our clinic. We're always asking for more vaccine. It's really hard to tell if we're being shorted. My suspicion is that, you know, when the state asks us for accounts and we provide it, my hope was is that we'd get somewhere close to that. We didn't. So again, we had to think on the fly and try and make things work locally.
No, I appreciate that, and I just hope that, you know, everyone's being treated fairly. My next topic is, I've had quite a few inquiries to my legislative office with regard to the, if you wanted to choose to get the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, which is supposed to be single dose, is there a way that somebody would, are there certain providers that are only providing that? I haven't been able to find that information. So if you could fill me in and whatever public is watching, how do you do that?
So essentially, like, I could speak for us. We, at this point, we just received our first delivery of Johnson and Johnson that we're going to be utilizing this Friday. Previous to that, we were using only Moderna, because we don't have, in the town, we don't have the capacity to store the Pfizer vaccine, which has to be held at ultra-cold temperatures. What I'll say at this point in time, from our standpoint, is that, you know, we're probably going to be ordering more Johnson and Johnson, because logistically, you know, with the one-dose regimen, it's, we could reach more people quickly. But again, you know, when we, like for this week, for example, we had, you know, X number of Moderna, X number of Johnson and Johnson, and we just called, write down our lists, and let folks know what was available on that given day. So we haven't gotten to the point where people are picking and choosing, per se. We're just saying this is what we have. I don't know if, and I think a lot of operators are kind of just saying this is what we have at this point, and if that's something you'd like, they'll give them an appointment. I know, for example, the Oakdale in town is using Pfizer primarily, so.
Okay, that comports with the information that I've been able to find. That's what I've been telling people. It is what it is at this point. And my last area is, you know, the Pfizer and the Moderna are two rounds. What accommodations are we making for individuals that travel for work? So let's say that they got their first dose here in Wallingford, they travel to California for the next two weeks for work. Is there some way that we're linking up, we're partnering with other states so that second dose can be administered, and I guess vice versa as well, somebody coming to our state?
That's something that hasn't really been worked out yet, but what I can say is we've come across that situation, and what we've done is, is if somebody misses their second dose by a week or so, we build them into a future clinic. You know, so we try and stick to that, you know, the twenty-eight days for Moderna. But again, you know, there's, you know, extenuating circumstances, whether it's for work or health reasons. Sometimes people are quarantined, some people actually obtain COVID. So it does have an impact on the scheduling. So I could tell you behind the scenes, we are, the scheduling of this is really the, where the clinics actually show, you know, the work that's done is really behind the scenes, per se, because the scheduling is so crucial to making this look right and go off well, and trying to make sure that we have not missed a second dose shot for anyone yet in town that's gotten their first shot with us. And so, you know, we're proud to say that we have not had to cancel one appointment on anyone so far. So our hope is to not do that moving forward.
Well, I thank you, and I just, you know, thank you for, you know, you've been a warrior and a hero through all this. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilor Fishbein.
Up next is Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How you doing, Stephen?
I'm doing well. How are you, Counselors Andrew?
Good, good. Hey, just one quick question, because I know that there's changes coming up in some of the state guidelines. So one of the ones that I haven't really been able to get any solid read on is the changes to the travel advisory. So I guess they're going from a requirement to a recommendation. Can you help us out here? Because I already got a couple of questions on it, and I went looking it up, and I really couldn't figure it out. Are we in a situation where people that are going, like, say, New York, Massachusetts, they don't have to wait, or, you know, wait the ten days? I mean, what are the changes with respect to the travel advice? Maybe if you know them, you can kind of give me the shortlist, and I don't have to kind of go through the details that I'm looking for here.
Yeah, it's a great question. So I haven't seen the actual wording yet modified to the executive order. The way I interpreted it is that it's going to be more of a recommendation than a requirement, which I think creates its own set of circumstances, but what I think will happen is Set of circumstances, but um, what I think will happen is if you have, what they'll continue to use probably is the term. Affected state, and if you are returning from an affected state, they will recommend certain measures. I I don't know what those are going to be. Um, whether it's, you know, if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine, or if you've had COVID in the last ninety days, or. Um, you know, there's probably going to be variations to that, but I have not seen the wording released um. For the March nineteenth rollout. I, we have not, we have not seen that yet.
Okay, I mean, and and I, you know, I guess that's, I I don't want to say it's a premature question because they haven't come up with the, but I'm just thinking that between now and Friday, I mean, I can think of a couple of scenarios that. You know, what I read was in the news where you had people that traveled, came back. They weren't even aware that they were supposed to quarantine themselves. They didn't, and they got fined. So this is why the my my personal concern, when I look at the the way I've read, oh, probably a lot of the same documentation that. You've seen, which is not really baked yet. When you go from a requirement to recommendation, so then. If someone should decide, well, you know, I traveled, I went to whatever, Michigan, because that's a state that's in, that's still being on the advisory list. I come back from Michigan, I, you know, there there's a recommendation that I wait ten days. I wait seven and decide I'm going to go out. I'm not really a follower of anything other than the fact that I I I haven't followed the recommendation. To the letter, but you know, then you get into that gray area. Well, before they used to find people, now they're not going to find people, so. I mean, I guess you can't answer something that's not baked yet either, but I hope that, you know, as. You're able to engage in conversations at Hartford that you ask them or say, listen, I've got people back home in Wallingford that are. Looking for definition around this. They don't, people want to adhere to the rules, but when they're ambiguous, they can't. They don't know, do I stay in ten days, fourteen days? What am I supposed to do? So I guess, I, you know, I guess as they come up with. The definition around that, you know, you know, we can get it from you, but I mean, hopefully too, that, you know, as you are there, you can engage and ask these questions on our behalf as well.
I will certainly do that. That was something that was discussed quite a lot in the office is what is a recommended travel advisory? Um, and so that's something that, again, as you said, will be baked and and hopefully we'll have the finished product soon, so we can interpret that and ask questions.
Awesome, perfect. That was all I I had for a question. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that's it from the council. From the public, I have a question from Bob.
Good afternoon, Chairman Savoni Bob Gross, Long Hill Road.
Good afternoon.
Uh, first thing to Attorney Fishby. Um, Yale has been posting, when you book an appointment with them, say it's at Mohican Sun or the old Bear or in wherever, Landman. Um, they tell you what what vaccine you're getting. Uh, so Landman was doing on Monday, Johnson and Johnson, the Mohican Sun was doing Johnson and Johnson on Saturday. And I know that Bear was doing Pfizer over the weekend, so they tell you, so you can pick and choose that way. I don't know what Harper's doing, but Yale's doing it that way. Um, a question for Mr. Civitelli. Um, what is the protocol? For workers and visitors visiting Town Hall right in relation to masks?
So visitors, so regarding visitors, um. As a signage is, it indicates upon entering the building, masks were would be required for. Those who are entering and and in the common areas of the facility.
And town employees? That are in the building?
Yes.
Yes, meaning they're required to wear masks also?
Yes, we, where social distancing is not. Um, available. With for this, with the six feet distancing, then masks would be required, which is what's stated in the. Governor's Executive Order for Public Buildings.
So with a, so a separate, would a separation count of six feet?
That's something that that's been discussed and, you know, we've used barriers and separation to to create that, and I think that's something you're going to see more of. Um, in the private sector soon, in the restaurants where with increased capacity. Um, they're going to start using those partitions to to develop that.
I understand that, but I'm talking about now.
So so you're asking, so a lot of, so is there a specific area that you're referring to, or?
No, somebody, uh, it's somebody told me something, and so I'm just asking for them the question about the. Because I haven't been to Town Hall, so I'm just asking, is the?
Yeah, typically, yeah, typically for town employees. And again, this is going to be as vaccine becomes more available. I'm sure many of you saw the changes to the masking requirements for those who are fully vaccinated, but. Until the governor lifts his executive order in situations where the six foot distancing is not attainable. Masks are required.
Right, and and the and the order is those masks are required, masks are not required for known people who have had the vaccination. Not for unknown.
It's for everyone, for everyone.
What is it? I, so you mean, if you have the vaccine, you don't have to wear a mask?
Uh, no, that's not what I'm saying. What, um, CDC's recent guidance, um, for those who are two weeks after their second vaccine or have. Have had their, two weeks after their first shot of Johnson and Johnson, um, the CDC released some guidance for those who are entering indoor. Activities in small groups, typically family settings, um, where the the mask would not be. Required per se.
Correct.
Something that just came out on March eighth, yeah.
Right, that I understand, but that's not a public setting. That's not a to a a building. All right, thank you very much.
Agreed, understood.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up from the public, Mr. Morganstein.
Good evening, Mr. Civitelli, how are you?
I'm doing well, Mr. Morganstein, how are you?
Good, I wanted to follow up on Mr. Gross's question because. I've also been approached by people that were surprised when they went into Town Hall. And saw in the offices that people weren't wearing masks. Is that? A policy that is being adopted at other Town Halls? Is that a? Really common practice at this point, or is that unique to Wallingford Town Hall?
I I can't speak to what other Town Halls have done. I know this has come up and, you know, obviously, we receive complaints about. Masking, whether it's in our own building or others in the community, and. We follow the executive order to the letter, so in a situation where six feet of distance is. Available. The way the order reads, because I've read it many times, and I think it's been misconstrued somewhat over time, is that, you know, if social distancing is available. Six feet is available, then the mask is not a requirement. And and again, we, again, we've received some concerns recently and we reevaluated that again. Um. And again, for the common areas where employees are in the hallways, restrooms, et cetera, um, masks are required, break rooms, copy room. With somebody's at their desk and six feet away from all other staff, um. Following the executive order, the mask would not be required to my, to my understanding of it.
Okay, and and a follow up on that, if I was to go to one of our public schools right now. And went to one of their offices, would that be their common practice at this point, or would their office? Staff be wearing masks if I went into their offices? Is their policy the same or different in our public school buildings?
I I couldn't speak to exactly how it's, the order is implemented. Um, again, I think what you're you're seeing more of is when people are stationary. If they're removing the mask, that's one thing. Um. If somebody's moving about the office, you know, interacting with other employees, then I think at that point, we would. Make the recommendation that they would wear the mask.
Yeah, I I think it's important that people understand why the distinctions are being made, and. Was that your decision, or was that a decision reached with? The administration or the mayor, or who, or is it solely a decision that you've come to? In terms of that policy?
Uh, no, I mean, I, the policy, there's the HR policy that mirrors the executive order. So we have not modified anything that's was already put in place. I don't know the exact order the governor put out, but it does make reference to in in. Public settings where six feet of distance is not available, masks are required.
Okay, and uh, another quick question on a slightly different subject is. Uh, I've been told, and I don't know whether this is true or not, have all Town Hall employees been vaccinated at this point?
No.
No.
Not all town employees have been vaccinated, no.
Some have, or or they've been vaccinated because they're in a certain age group, or so it's not been general that everybody's been vaccinated at Town Hall?
No, the employees that have been vaccinated and have are scheduled to be vaccinated are based on the age groupings. So I think. Many of us are familiar with the discussion early on about critical workforce and. Um, we were going to vaccinate the entire workforce based on that plan. When the governor pivoted and went to the age-based rollout, so did we. Obviously, we're following. His lead on this, and um, so town employees that fit the certain age brackets were were, we're starting to vaccinate. Um, we did some of our utility folks more recently because they are the critical of the critical workforce people and. Um, in subsequent weeks, we're going to look at to see what employees are still left.
Okay, it's important, I guess, that people that thought that know that that isn't the case then, so I'm glad that you were able to answer that. Thank you.
Uh, next is back to Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm sorry, some of the conversation prompted uh, another question for me. Um. Mr. Civitelli, do you, do we on our our town website, because I'm I'm going to admit that I haven't looked in the past couple of weeks. Do we have any documentation that mirrors any, or do we just redirect everybody to the state with respect to? You know, the the changes in the orders, or you know, what our our health department, what your department is kind of giving away as guidance, or are you just? Defaulting right to the state?
Um, what we're offering right now is we've done um. Several more, several updates recently on the rollout, what we're able to do, what our plans are, who to contact for certain vaccine appointments. Um, what our plans are currently, we've also been posting all of our presentations on the Health Department website that have been provided to the council. As well as some of the redirects for CDC updated guidance. Um, so that's more and and some of the test data that's available at the state of Connecticut. So that's kind of, there's a section for COVID nineteen specific on the. Um, launch page that redirects you to some of the other press releases that we've given recently.
Okay, I I knew the slides were there and and I, you know, I wanted to take the opportunity too to say that the information that you've been able to consolidate into those decks on a. Biweekly basis for us and then for everybody else has been fantastic. So I I personally. Appreciate it, but I know, I know many, many other people do too, because I get this information out. To others as they ask for, and I put it up on Facebook too, and I know that you've got it on your site. I just. My key, my key reason for asking that question was going back to the to the mass conversation, because it it is starting to. Evolve, and unfortunately, as as we've already, you know, discussed here on the call, it changes, you know, with the fully vaccinated people. There's, there's recommendations that they continue to do certain things, but there's not requirements. So. The reason, the reason I did that I was making the ask is I like to be able to redirect people, because what happens is. Unfortunately, uh, there's a lot of people with their own understanding. And it may or may not be correct, and I like to be able to go to guidance, you know, easier. You know, the CDC website, sometimes a challenge to navigate around to find specifically what I'm looking for, and the state's orders are the same. They they keep. Reiterating new orders and they leave everything else below it, so they put the changes at the top. So it's a little challenging, because I know that as we reach these vaccination levels with people, they're going to start to go out. You know, without the masks and, you know, and there's going to be. Challenges that there's going to be certain businesses, they're going to want to maintain them independently, and. Within a business, I suppose that's their right. They can say, you know, no shoes, no shirt, no shirt, no service. They can say, even though the the state's. Parameters might be lessened, they want to maintain it. And then we kind of go back into the early days before there was an order to force masking. That, you know, these businesses still had a right to do certain things. So I I guess we're going to have to try to start to address those types of questions as they. As they come up. So I I appreciate that you're keeping the website up to date, because I'd rather direct them to your site. Than push them up to Harper or push them out to the CDC, when that's a harder set of sites to navigate. So uh, thank you for that add-on information. I appreciate it. I'm I'm also, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. A follow-up question from what about Bob?
What about Bob? Um, good afternoon again, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Um, that was a good movie, by the way. Um. The, just based on this conversation then, so to Mr. Civitelli, then there's the potential then. That how this is rolling out, more masked people, there might be less masked people around in Town Hall. Um, based on what's being said, I know people that are hesitant to approach people without masks. Are because not knowing their situation and, you know, with the variants that are out there. Um, because even though you get vaccinated, doesn't mean you can't get it. Correct? You still can get it. The the severity is completely different, but you still can. Acquire the virus, from my understanding. Slim, but you can still get it. So the question becomes to the council, this is the opportunity where this is a pandemic, hopefully on its way out. Don't know if we're going to another one. We, I think that you need to. Hopefully with the mayor, make Town Hall more user online friendly. So people don't have to be put in a situation if they're uncomfortable coming in to pull a permit, get something. Drop off paperwork, pay a bill, et cetera. Um, so people don't have to be put in a situation where they're uncomfortable because of pandemic or this pandemic. I don't know if that's something that's on the uh, sites of the council. Hopefully it is. Especially with the money that's coming from the federal government, hopefully soon, the town, maybe these are things that the town can look at doing. Yes, no?
Did you say money?
Oh, hopefully.
The federal government sending us money to spend?
It appears that that's going to possibly happen as uh, soon. Very soon. And not just a little money, a lot of money.
We will bear that in mind.
Well, it's just, you know, I mean, it's, you're putting people in an uncomfortable position, and it's something that can be taken care of, and as we know, we had an uncomfortable position recently, so hopefully this won't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Civitelli, that looks like that's all we have for you. Thank you very much for all of your hard work, and uh, I'm, no offense, but I'm looking forward to a day when you are not on the agenda for this.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, up next is item seven, and I will be stepping away and turning the meeting over to the Vice Chairman for this for ethical reasons. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, yours.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion to approve a lease agreement between the town of Wallingford and the Connecticut STEM Academy? For the use of the rear portion of the SCAL building located at two eighty-four Washington Street for a five-year term. At a rental rate of one dollar per year.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, any counselors? Uh, actually, we have Chris Stone here as well, um, Director of Connecticut STEM Academy. Do you want to open with anything, Mr. Stone, or you just want to go to the questions?
Uh, thank you very, uh, very much, Vice Chairman. Um, and thank you for this opportunity this evening to uh, to. Uh, have some time uh, with the Town Council with this item before the uh, the council. Um, I'll be happy to. Uh, answer any questions. I know, um, for the most part, I think many members of the council are probably familiar with. Uh, with our program in town and the historical nature of the program, um. With uh, Wallingford Youth and Social Services and and many town agencies. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And uh, and and I think the lease is. Kind of clear, but you're going to continue to work with SCAL, um, and who's also here, Adriana Rodriguez, the Director of SCAL, Executive Director of SCAL. Um, with kind of sharing. The space. Um, so if anybody was concerned with that, is that that is true, right?
Oh, yes, that is. Oh, yes, that is correct. We very much collaborate often, and we meet almost on a daily basis. You'll also notice in the lease agreement, there is also a very clear collaboration still with Wallingford Youth and Social Services, which obviously, for those who don't know, we've been collaborating with Wallingford Youth and Social Services for over 20 years. Craig Turner and I partnered on this program since the year, since 2000, when I went to NASA Space Camp. Just a quick kind of recap, this whole program was, you know, came to be with a teacher grant through the Quest Foundation, which was part of the Quinnipiac Chamber of Commerce, and went to NASA Space Camp, came back, started a young astronaut club, collaborated with the Wallingford Public Library, which led to Mr. Turner's office, Wallingford Youth and Social Services, which has led to lots of, lots of really impactful programs over the years in the town of Wallingford, not only for youth, but also for families as well.
Great, yes, thank you. Do any councilors have any questions? Counselor Tada?
Thank you. Is there a current lease? And if so, is it the same, was it the same term and the same amount?
Would you like me to answer that question?
Sure.
If you want the answer, but I think the mayor might have a better.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, Bill Dickinson, there isn't a current lease. This is the new area that's close to being completely renovated. It was a storage area in the old cafeteria when the senior center was at the building. It was a storage area. All of the materials have been removed, and it's now, or will be soon, available for STEM Academy. The lease in paragraph two indicated the premises can only be used for the STEM program, which is sponsored by the Wallingford Youth and Social Services Department. So there is a long history to that. Chris Stone has been remarkable in his leadership and organization of STEM Academy. It's been a wonderful educational opportunity for so many youth. They did not have a leased area prior to this. This would be the first lease for them. And it's very much with the sponsorship of YSS and the cooperation of the SCOW organization.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Stone, but you're currently in the SCOW building though, correct? You're just not in this dedicated space?
Correct, yes. We've been sharing space with SCOW since 2011, you know, under the collaboration and oversight of Wallingford Youth and Social Services Department, yes. So it's very much a shared collaborative opportunity in terms of, you know, storage of materials, but also programming as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Any other questions from councilors? Seeing none, any from members of the public? Nope, anybody on the phone? No, coming back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishine.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yes.
Morone.
Yes.
Morky.
Yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Tata.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Cervoni.
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes. And, Mr. Chairman, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Very nicely done. Moving along the agenda, the remaining portion until we come out for the end of the meeting is an executive session. I will be asking for a motion to go into executive session, and will ask those of you who are not participating in the executive sessions to leave. If you don't leave, I might get impatient and kick you out. And you can then log back into the meeting, and you'll be in the waiting room while we remain in executive session. So with that, can we have a motion to go?
Mr. Chairman, item number eight.
Good grief.
The ladies' item.
My apologies. I went from seven to nine. Sorry. Yes, Counselor Morganstein, the next item, yours, and Counselor Todd, is discussion and possible action regarding EV charging stations in public parking lots. Counselor Morganstein, Counselor Tada, how you want to present is up to you. I do have your materials ready to present. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think she and I decided that I would do an intro, and she would then jump off from there. So we're here to discuss and hopefully find a way forward for some type of action in putting EV charging stations into municipal, public-owned parking lots. There's a lot of moving parts to this, planning and zoning, electric division, public works, engineering, administrative approval. There's a whole lot to this, and we want to start the discussion, and hopefully we can get some action moving forward with the discussion. So we're hoping to wade in here. I wanted to start, can I, I had sent you those three single slides. Could I maybe put those up? If I know how to share a screen, or I can just talk?
Do you, do you want to put them up yourself?
I don't know if I know how. Is it where it says screen?
I mean, if you'd like, I can.
Okay, yeah, the three that I said that had come from Adelaide, yeah. That would be great, because I think the first slide talks about why we should do it, and so there's any number there, including attracting visitors to spend time and money, especially post-pandemic. Here we are needing to do everything as a town to help rebuild for the good of the businesses, as well as the tax base. Attracting young professional families is also valuable. My daughter is hopefully shopping for a house in Wallingford and quotes Realtor.com all the time. Realtor.com lists higher properties' values as a benefit in communities that have EV charging stations. The state of Connecticut has an emissions reduction goal. This would certainly put us in that. And I guess you have control of going to the second slide, not me. Thank you. So what are the costs? And when I first put up this agenda item, I became very excited because there is a company that will give free charging stations in exchange for advertisement. And I can, at any point of the meeting, ask if we can share Volta's PowerPoint that they provided for that purpose, but I won't go there yet. I think we should have a discussion first. So there are various companies, one called Juice Box or Juice Bar, anywhere from $6,000 to $7,000. A company called Clipper Creek provides just the charging device for $700. EV S E LLC can either do utility pole-mounted for $3,500 or a double mount on a pedestal for $6,500. And then, as mentioned, Volta provides advertisement that does share some municipal advertisement time, and that advertisement offsets the price. Purchase and lease sponsorship are other options. So it's a very deep dive into how would you want to fund such a thing? And again, all of the different regulating bodies. Currently Volkswagen has a lawsuit settlement after their emissions fiasco, and there are grant opportunities that, of course, do have timelines and deadlines. So now is a reason, based on those grants, and of course, are looking to do the improvements to the parking lots, looking to come up in the fall paving season. I think the next slide has just some mechanics of what things look like, and so there they are. So why do we want to do it? Attract visitors to spend time and money. And the now, I already said, thank you. Our own PCD, in fact, states that we have the promotion, a goal of energy conservation through Town Operations Infrastructure and Services. And our own PCD also says that we should be supporting efforts to provide electric vehicle charging stations at key facilities, including retail hubs, large offices, town parking facilities, and N H H S train station, which we have now. How can we do that? That's where we get to the, let's all discuss, please. And thank you so much to Adelaide Copfer for, I couldn't have done any of this without her, did all of the homework. And Christina, you have the turn. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat anything Counselor Morganstein said. While we do recognize that the council can only act in a discussion-based or symbolic capacity in regards to this, we did feel it was important to discuss the various opportunities that we do have today. They range anywhere from somewhat costly to revenue-producing and everything in between, as we just saw on the middle slide. But currently, there are a variety of grants available. So then we may ask, why now? Now is the time to do this because time is of the essence. I mean, we'd like to be on the front end of this, and if we wait, the grant opportunities could be lost. For example, the Volkswagen grant, which, once the money is gone with that, it's gone, because that was a settlement. In addition, it will be cost-effective for the town to plan for and build the infrastructure, while the two town-owned lots we mentioned, Brothers and Wallace, will start to be constructed soon. So now is the time to make some decisions as to how we want to go forward with these charging stations. Also, with budget season underway, we wanted to make the various departments and administration aware of these possible grant opportunities, so that they can be considered in departmental budgets as applicable. For me personally, my concern was and is a cost to the taxpayer. However, through our research and the diligence of Mrs. Copfer, we have learned that there are options that could be revenue-neutral, or even revenue-producing in a few circumstances. As Counselor Morganstein stated, our plan of conservation and development does bring up electric vehicle charging stations in several areas. Under Community Facilities Goals, it states to promote energy conservation through Town Operations, Infrastructure and Services. And in, under strategies, it states to support efforts to provide electric vehicle charging stations at key facilities, including retail hubs, large offices, town parking facilities, and the train station. I'm just going to go over a couple of current events in relation to this. General Motors has stated that they will stop making gasoline-powered vehicles by the year 2035. So that was some big news recently. Volvo has also stated that they will go fully electric by 2030. Ford recently announced that they will spend $22 billion on electric vehicles through the year 2025. And the Ford Mustang Mach-E, which is now available, is an electric Mustang. So who'd have thought? You wouldn't have, when it told me that was happening five years ago. Volkswagen has said that they will spend $86 billion toward electric and autonomous vehicles in a similar timeframe. So I bring that up because this doesn't seem to be a fad anymore. Electric vehicles are here, and they're increasing in production. So now it seems to be the opportune time for us to invest in this without having to spend much or possibly any money to do so, and we can get into further options for that. We just need to decide which options are the best for the town and how to best proceed. So that is the rationale for this discussion. Thank you.
All right, so I guess it's discussion time. I will say it makes sense to address this while we're improving town parking lots and while the pavement will be open, and before it's finished, it certainly makes sense. And my personal perspective is, you know, we can put the conduit in, we can leave something there for somebody else to run with. I think we probably should come up with a plan as to where these potential locations would be, come up with specifications, and put it out to bid, to lease to some private contractor who can install the charging stations and collect the money and pay the electric division for the electricity. So those are my thoughts. We have requests for comment. First up is Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, great job, Gina and Christina. This is, I love talking about stuff like this. I will admit, I'm kind of on the fence in general. I don't know a lot about this stuff, so I'm listening. All right, a couple, really one question. I do appreciate the stats you provided about General Motors and Ford. I might be dead in the year 2035, but you'll still be here, so that's great. We went through, I think, so if I'm reading the backup right and hearing your comments correctly, you've talked about some of these could be self-revenue generating with advertisements. On the ordinance committee, we grappled with that a couple, in 2019, with this whole advertising in fields, because there was a concept that was before us, where like Little League would contribute, I'm just using that as an example, but Little League would sort of be a third party controlling the advertising. And when we talked with Attorney Small, and we kind of looked at it, that was a non-starter. And the thing that they're looking at today with ads in fields is the town regulates the ad. And it's not, I mean, this is in discussion. Nothing's happening yet for people watching this, but it's in discussion. But what's in discussion is, you know, heavily regulated, it's, the ads all look the same, it's a banner, it's just local businesses. So I guess, yeah, so I just wanted to ask you guys about that, or you women about that, sorry. If you have a, if you thought about that aspect with the self-revenue.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually have an answer. I spoke with the Volta gentleman today, and what he said is that they, first off, as a company, have policies that are very specific toward types of things that is in just their own general contract. And then if anyone were to decide to go the advertising route, we would have Attorney Small negotiate with them a very specific contract, and the contract would say what type of ads we do not want to have. And then the other point is that the, and I'm not, I'm not sold on the idea, because it's not a static ad. It's every eight seconds it changes, so similar to a billboard on the highway. So it's there, you know, right now it says Stop and Chop, eight seconds later it says Coca-Cola. We, as the municipality, have the ability to have 15% of the ads. So you could watch seven of these ads that are for other things, and then it could come up, Wallingford Center Inc. is sponsoring Restaurant Week. So there is a portion of it that is useful. But yeah, again, my original was, gee, it's free, doesn't that look great? I think the specifics, if anyone were to think they wanted to go that route, would be very specific with planning and zoning and regulations and all of that. But he said, you know, the contract of what the advertisements are is driven by the person purchasing the, you know, the contract with them, which would be us.
Okay, that sounds better. I would still want to hear Attorney Small, because I just, she's drilled it into my head that when the town, it's not government speech anymore, it's First Amendment. And so I'm, but I'd love to hear, get her to weigh in, but I'm glad that you thought about it, and if that were true, that would be great. You actually anticipated my next question. And I agree with what everyone said, and Chairman Cervoni said, you're looking at, the timing is right. If you're going to, you know, redoing all these parking lots now, this is the time to do it. So by that logic though, we're not redoing Simpson, the front of Simpson Court, like Simpson Court itself. So nothing would, there will be no charging stations proposed in the center.
Proposal for anything publicly owned, I did not want to go down any rabbit hole. Yeah, so the presentation that he put together, you know, he, he drew one in the front part of Simpson Court. That was just his artistic license of here's what it could look like. I would never dream, I wasn't even asking to even think about Simpson Court, never mind the front of it.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, I just had visions of sitting at Archie Morris and it feels like you're at the lower county metro north stop or something with, you know, ads flashing.
And there's no sound, no sound, but yeah, but they do change the picture, yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest, you know, one other parking lot we're going to redo someday. I don't, we're not, probably not this year, Community Pool, that's another place we could, we could put these. But anyway, okay, I'm going to listen. I appreciate both of you bringing this up and those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tata has a follow up, I guess, about advertising.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make it clear too, in case it wasn't the, the chargers with the advertising that we have the examples of in the backup, that's just one option. So, you know, there's also the chargers that don't involve the advertising. So we just want to give, provide an array of all the, basically lay out all of the options that we have. So if the town, you know, decides that we don't want to go the advertising route or legally, we, we don't want to get into that. We don't need to, that's just, that was the, the, one of the revenue neutral options, so we just thought we'd throw it out there. But again, there's, there are other options and we can pursue grants that would also probably become revenue neutral. That did not have the advertising, so just so we're, everyone's clear on that. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the ad generating charging stations are quite large. I mean, the, you know, the sign is the size of a person and I really wonder how that fits in with our zoning regulations anyway. So I mean, that, we do have to comply with our zoning regs. Next up is Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I didn't have this question originally, I had more comments to make, but now, now I've got it. So what, what is our, our concern with the advertising? When I, when I fuel my son's car up or my wife's car, because of course I have the electric car. There's, there's little TV screens on the gas pumps. They are, they play sound, I hear dialogue, there are ads on them. Are those regulated? And if, if not, then why are we so concerned about the regulation of this? Now, I understand the, the example, charging station we saw was very, very large screen. They have smaller ones. And if this makes them so that there's no cost to the town, I, I don't understand what our, what our concern is, since we already do it for commercial businesses in town. Does anybody have an answer?
Well, I, I can easily distinguish the, you know, the video and audio that you see at the gas pump. It, it doesn't rise to the level of a regulated sign. It's not so large that you can see it from the road. And, and the issue that Counselor Tretell was addressing that we've dealt with in the past is the concern about content. You know, if, if you, if you don't have the right to regulate the free speech because of the First Amendment, well then, you don't get to pick and choose who advertises. And if something is distasteful or not family friendly, you might not be able to prevent it from being posted. I think that's the concern.
All right, so if it was a private parking lot and somebody had a free charger on it with ads, we're okay then?
Well, that's not public property. There's no First Amendment right to free speech on private property.
Okay, well, because, because I'm hearing different things like zoning, signs got to fit into zoning. If it's small enough, can't be seen from the road. I'm just concerned that we're taking a potential to bring something and we're just defeating it as we go along. I mean, we, we wanted public partner, private, public partner sponsorship with something like this. And I don't want to lean too hard and, and not get them. I'm not saying bend the rules or change the rules, but if it's good for a gas station, how can we make it work? Can we reduce the screen size? What, what does it take to get it so that we can do something like that? I, I guess I'm just kind of.
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not expressing an opinion adverse. I, I'm telling you with what, you know, we, our signs are regulated in town. You, you put a sign in front of your office, you have to pay for a sign bond and it has to fit regulations, be certain sizes. Not, I mean, we even regulate how you light up a sign. So those are in the regulations.
So do we regulate the gas stations then and those little TV screens?
Those don't, those don't amount to the definition of a sign.
Okay. No, it's good to know because if they, if they don't, then we reach a point where possibly these, these charging stations could do the same thing then. If they don't meet the terminology of a sign, so. And I, and I didn't want to debate that. I'm just kind of curious how we set a set of guidelines for one thing and kind of skate on something else. But that's, I guess that's a different discussion. I, I want to put my support behind this because again, as I kind of prefaced already and people already are pretty much aware. I'm, I'm the electric car driver on the council. I'm, I'm at a full blown electric and I've stated prior and I'm going to reiterate again. When, when I travel, when I used to travel pre-COVID, a lot in that car. I specifically looked for a charger so I could charge up. A lot of times they were free, sometimes they cost, they still cost less than a gas pump. I've been tracking it since I bought the car in, in late 2018. The, the amount that I pay for electricity, when I do pay for it is less than the fuel that I used to put in my car. So that right there is a savings. But the, the point is, I would go somewhere and I would put the car up for an hour so it would charge up on a level three charger. And I'd go get something to eat and I would gravitate away from a larger area and go to a smaller area because there was a charger there. That, that's a magnet for business. So I mean, you can't underscore that. And to some of the points that Counselor Tata and Counselor Morganstein have been bringing up in the research that Ms. Knopfler got to us all, which I thought was fantastic. And I, I really want to extend my thanks to her as well. It's more research than I could have done and I'm the, I'm the guy with the electric car. I know she has one too though, so. But the idea is that the, a lot of the quote unquote anxieties of an electric car are going away. These things have longer and longer ranges. It's be, one of the main issues is how do I charge up if I'm traveling with the car? As more and more of these stations show up and people get used to it, they, they don't have as much range anxiety as they, they used to, or they do. Same thing was with cell phones and portable devices. They would take them out, people would charge, they'd leave the house on 100% charge. And the minute they found a place to plug, plug in it, they were 75%. They wanted to bring it back up to full because they were always worried about running out. And the same is true with the vehicle, but these things are coming, there, there, people are getting used to them as they get exposed to them through friends and neighbors and so forth. The, the costs of the vehicles are coming down, they're coming down dramatically. There's a, there's going to be a war between the, the different companies that build these things to get those costs down. It's just like the computers. First desktop computers were $4,000 apiece, $5,000 apiece, and only the hobbyist or, or people that were well off could get them. They became mainstream when they dropped below a certain point. We're there, we're getting there right now. The, the other side of it, which people don't normally put together is the maintenance cost. I've had 28,000 miles on my car and other than some damage that happened to my car that was done. So people, as they get to understand that there's, there's no fluids to flush and things to change up, these cars are going to become more and more popular. And this type of thing is going to be in demand. I think that between the, the need of our residents for these types of things, whether they're charged for or made for free and, and, and having them available in our business areas. And that, that becomes part of working into the parking lots. It's just, it's just a, it's a win-win all the way around. And I really would like to see us be supportive of this as to the maximum extent that the council can be. And then, and then kind of champion this forward. So again, I, I want to thank everybody for bringing the presentation forward and allowing us to discuss it tonight. So thank you very much.
Next is Counselor Marone.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I guess I'm, I'm supportive of the idea more or less because I think that, you know, I think that some of this is coming. I, I think that we're notoriously bad at predicting the future. I think that in the, you know, when, when I was a kid, I remember talking about when the world was going to run out of oil. And then we talked about widespread world starvation and so on and so forth. So I think that it's easy to set, to look at the technology we have now, which is the sort of prevalence of electric vehicles, which are really heavily funded by the federal government in terms of grants and so on, and suggests that this is the wave of the future. I think it could be, but I think there's other competing technologies that also could be. So I think that the idea of having more charging stations in town is great. I think I'd like to, ideally, I'd like to see them on private property and not on public property. You know, the government has a monopoly on power, so it's kind of like the government is giving away the thing or selling at a discount, the thing that they already control to consumers. So I just, I don't know that I want to see Wallingford in the business of, of fueling stations, whether they be petroleum or electric. But I don't, but I'm supportive of the idea of electric cars certainly. And they're certainly gaining in popularity. So I think that, you know, when we talk about public, private partnerships, I'd be more interested in, in maybe helping other businesses put in these, these in their lots as opposed to having necessarily on town owned property. But those are just my thoughts. And then my question for a great presentation, by the way, to Counselors Morganstein and Tata. I know there's a, Meredith has a bunch of charging stations. Have you come across anything in your research to suggest how much usage they get in their stations? Or some of the private stations in town, of which there's a bunch? Thank you.
If either of you would care to answer that.
Again, most, most of the research was by Adelaide and we're the presenters of it. Can I invite if Adelaide has an answer to that? Or maybe Jason, because again, he's the one out there using. Unless you have an answer, Christina.
I, I do not, I'm not aware of the answer to that question.
I'm not trying to put you guys on the spot, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'm fascinated by this whole, this whole, you know, issue.
No takers? I think Adelaide is here.
Have the answer. Counselor Marone, if, if no one had the answer, we can look into it.
Counselor Zandry is volunteering to answer.
So I can, I can answer, I can answer by, by passive observation if that helps you at all, Joe. So when, when I, in, in the warmer months, which we're getting back to, I will often drive down after 6:00 PM to the Wallingford train station so that I can park my car, leave it a few hours to charge for free, walk around, walk home. I'll come back later in the night and pick it up. There is oftentimes that you're jockeying for those two chargers because they're full. Now during the day, the only time that they'll be full is if someone's paid for the parking spot and they're on the train because they're supposed to pay for the spot. But I will tell you that it's pretty decently used. So additionally, the ones by Stop and Shop, and even today, I went to the bank for 15 minutes. I went to People's Bank, I plugged in, there was somebody using the other charger while I was there. So there's quite a bit of use. Now, I don't know that, I wouldn't be able to give you the, the rates of consumption, in other words, the profit margin or the, you know, the amount of power used. But I can tell you that they basically draw between six, if it's a shared plug, it's 3.3 kilowatts per hour. And if it's a, if it's a set dedicated plug, they can go upwards of six and a quarter per hour. So it's going to depend on how long the car is there. I don't know if that helps you at all, Joe.
No, that is helpful. And actually, Jason, if you don't mind, that brings me to a follow up question. And that is, so at the train station, is there anything that would prevent you from, if you rent the parking space? In other words, I guess you could park the car there all day and leave it plugged in all day?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's, there's kind of like a, I'm trying to think of the word for it. There, when, when I go and I've done it, I've traveled on the train, plugged the car. And so what I, what I will do is I will park my car in the second spot. There's, there's a, you can imagine that where the charger is, it's, it's basically center right to two spots. So you could be in the left spot and the right spot. The idea is that the next spot over could also use the charger if, if this middle spot is, is consumed. Because the court is just long enough to reach the third spot. The, the etiquette is that if, if my car is there all day and I'm fully charged, I, I, I as a car user, understand that someone might disconnect my car because they can see that it's done, reconnect it, and then they'll bring it over to the other spot. It's kind of like a, like a known user thing, you know? I'm not, I'm not there to move the car because I'm, I'm commuting. They would use it if my car were charged. Now, the other piece of it would be, as an example, when I bring my car down there to go for a walk, I know how long it'll take to charge it all the way up. If I feel like I won't be back in, in enough time, I'll go back early. In other words, if my walk is going to take three or four hours, I'm going to stop somewhere, I'll go back to remove the car. So there's a lot of consideration between electric car drivers. Most people are not bad actors where they'll, they'll leave it all night long. Sometimes it does happen if someone commutes overnight. But with, to the specific question of if I paid $2 for the spot all day, kind of entitled to the spot. But I, I also understand that someone might remove my charger if my car is full and bring it over to the next space. It's kind of a, again, kind of like a, the etiquette for between the users, if that helps you at all.
Yeah, that does.
Okay, there's a pause in the conversation. Next is Counselor Fishbine.
Mr. Chairman, I indicated in the chat that I, I got an answer to my question.
My apologies, I wasn't reading ahead.
No problem, thank you.
Yeah. Please note that Counselor Fishbine avoided the opportunity to speak. Counselor Laughlin.
Counselor Shortell was, I know I haven't gone yet, I don't know if he has an question or an answer or response that is imminent to what was being discussed before I.
Yeah, I'm kind of lost on that, what you're talking about, Counselor Shortell.
I, I'll do whatever you guys want. You want me to go or you want to go Tom and I'll wait, doesn't matter.
I'll defer to Counselor Shortell for now.
Okay. I, just quickly, because Counselors Angie had asked about the signage question. What I was talking about and, and Counselor Morganstein already answered this, but just to reiterate, I was referring to within the backup. If you've ever seen the movie Interstellar, remember the robots from Interstellar? This looks like one of the robots from Interstellar. That's how big it, that's the sign, that's the ads I was referring to. A gas station TV is like, is like this big. This is like 50 times bigger than a gas station TV. There's no comparison. So this is what I was objecting to. I don't want this on Main Street. I don't want this in Wallingford. That's what I was talking about. No comparison with what's in a gas station TV that only the person pumping gas can see. But as Counselor Tata pointed out as well, this is just one choice of many different options. And as Counselor Morganstein said, they took some artistic license, she didn't agree with this. I, but I just wanted to, that's where I was coming from in terms of why I objected to the, to the advertisements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laughlin, we're back to you.
Thank you. So as I said, said before, I'm generally in favor of definitely of priming at least some of these spots for this sort of expansion or growth or as we're building these, put them in. I, I still struggle or, and maybe it's because I don't understand the electric car etiquette yet or everything, but is, you know, how much of it is our responsibility to provide versus a gas station is an exchange between two private entities? And they, a consumer pays money for fuel. I mean, can we, I would rather not have an, I guess, the ads if we were charging people to use them and, and they, and they were net. I'm not looking to make a lot of money on these, but if, if the consumer pulled up to one of these station, stations, similar to what Counselor Zandry was talking about, and they paid a fee, you know, can we expect that those payments would ultimately cover the cost in use of the spot? That would be my preference. Because as Counselor Shortell said, just the, the size of the ad that they showed, they're really advertising to everybody, not, not the, not for the 25 second ad that's running while you're pumping gas. And that is mostly because I wanted to address something that was mentioned earlier with the, with the gas station ads. Those are private businesses that can say no if they want to, or more easily than we can, differently than we can. There's an argument that, to be made on whether we can, we can say no to a certain type of ad. And that's my only hesitation, that's been my hesitation with the ball field ads and, and things like that. Although I generally, I, I want to keep talking about it. I'm not, I, I want to feel good about doing those things. And that would be included here on these, on these ads here. If I could ask Counselor Zandry a question, because again, he has the, the electric car. He commented like when you do pay for it. So do you mostly, are you able to go park places and not have to pay to, to charge your vehicle? So do you mostly, are you able to go park places and not have to pay to, to charge your vehicle? Is that like the standard right now?
So there's, there's a couple of different apps that I use and I, I will find locations that, that offer free charging. So like the, the, each of the apps show free parking, free chargers, or they'll say cost to park, free chargers, or they'll say cost to park, cost to charge, and, and on and on. So you, you definitely in the app know what you're dealing with when you pull up. The chargers that are down in North Haven is an example that are over by Ruby Tuesday. You can park there freely, but to use those, you have to pay to, you know, obviously use the, the, you know, utility costs to charge up. On a, on a dollar per dollar, mile per mile charge, you're paying less for electricity than you do fuel. And that is mainly because of the, the road taxes that are, that are in the fuel. Like I said, I've been, I've been running a spreadsheet since 2018 and it's cheaper for me all the way to $3.50 a gallon. After that, when it, I'm sorry, the other way around. All the way down to, all the way down to about $3.50 a gallon. Then it starts to swing and it's marginal. When it gets down to $2.79 a gallon, gas is more, is more inexpensive at that point. So, but, but when you do pay for electricity, it's, it's, it's less than a fill-up. So like, well, you know what, you might fill up a regular car, might be 30, 35 bucks to fill it. If I completely charge my car from 20% capacity to 20% remaining, bring it back up to full, it's about $18, give or take, depending on where I go. And now that, that gets me 300 miles where a full car might get 400, depending on the gas mileage. So there's a, about 100 miles tank variable. I'm not sure if that, that, was that your question? Did you want more?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand like what, you know, what are we, what market are we trying to meet? You know, because I want, I want to participate in the market. And then do you have your, do you have a charger at your house? Or, or do you find that most people do or don't? And you're, you're using these, you know, publicly shared?
So what, well, so myself personally, I have a 40-amp Level 2 charger in my garage. I basically ran number eight wire from, from the, the box and I have an oven plug and that's what the unit is in, in my house. Most people that have an electric car or a hybrid even, they do tend to have their own, their own chargers at home. But what you will find are, there are renters that, that don't have that capability, so they will look for public charging. I know a lot of out-of-towners, when they come to town and they're, they're looking for places to go. Like they, they drive, you know, 40, 50, 60 miles. They know they've got to go about 60 miles back. If they're at full charge to go, they know that, you know, they know that they're, they can get back home. But they will look for a place to top off, for lack of a better way to say. And if it's, and if it's a few bucks to top it off, you know, five, six, $8, they'll spend it because it's just that comfort level. It's a comfort level of knowing that, you know, if they've got to drive farther, they can, they can top it off.
So I, I, can I make part of an answer, Tom?
Sure, I know, I see everybody is like raising their hands and writing in the chat, so I don't want them to know where to go, but sure.
Yeah, yeah. So one of the other things is as you're looking at public-private, you know, who owns the land? So the other thing is that if we were looking in public parking lots, you could say, similar to the solar panels, we own the property. Would you, the charging company, want to lease our land? And then it's owned by them, but it's on our land. The other way around can be, do we want to lease the item? I think that the gentleman from the electric division is also here because I think part of the question becomes, what is the cost to us if we were to provide it as a free thing? Because we feel that it drives the economy of people coming to our town. Again, these are all the various questions. But yeah, that lease, you know, instead of advertisement is one other way to offset, you know, cost to us because we do own public parking lots. So there's that answer to if we didn't want to say the cost comes at all from us.
Great, thank you. And then, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll thank Counselor Tada, that she also had an answer.
Thank you. Counselor Morrison covered half of it. But also the, the payment option, if we, if we did go that route and charge for it, which is certainly an option. I'm not exactly sure how that, that could create a little bit of bureaucracy as, you know, as far as how the payments are collected. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm sure it's all electronic, but I don't know, you know, how that, we handle that. So, you know, there's pluses and minuses to all of these different options. But I think the, the big, and I know you had mentioned that you were good with, you know, laying the conduit. And I think when we had talked about the Brothers Lot, I believe that, that was agreed upon that, that we're going to do that there, which is great, you know, that it once, you know, that's the time to do it because you're not going to rip up a parking lot later to, to do that. But I think one of the things we really wanted to bring out tonight too was that even if we do lay the conduits and, and get them ready to go, which is great, there are fast approaching deadlines to some of these grants. And so if we, you know, if it were decided that we do want to pursue this and whichever, you know, way the town wants to go, if it wants to do anything, I know, I think, I believe the road flagging grants, one of the deadlines was in April. So I, I think that was kind of why we were in a little bit of a rush to get this rolling tonight because we don't want to miss out on these opportunities to, to potentially get these done for free. So I just wanted to bring that out. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. So, I mean, I guess it comes to me, I, I would say, yeah, we want to, I want to lay the conduits, I want to be ready. I, I don't want to feel necessarily that, you know, our, our back is up against the wall. If, if one's coming in April, then maybe we miss out on this one. The timing just isn't right. But it, yeah, it is good to be aware of all of them. You know, are we obligated as the government to provide these parking spaces and, and free or available fueling for people's vehicles? Like, no. But I, but as, as the caretakers of public property, public parking spots, you know, what do we, we want to draw and incentivize people to come in? I just want to try and do it, you know, as, as well as we can. So that, I mean, that leads to my next question. Because I, I don't know how many people, like, so Jason, Counselor Xandri is in town. He does have a charging thing in his, in his house, at his house. He goes to downtown. There's, so he doesn't have any range anxiety in that case, in that situation. And I, I, so people would have to travel, you know, 100 miles before they would start to have range anxiety about returning it back to visit someplace in town. But what is the, what's the, what's the process? I don't know, Chairman Stravoni, that's you or Ms. Mayor Dickinson? You know, a bid process? Or we have to determine on an administrative level if we are going to go ahead and do this? And then it goes out to bid? And then do we construct a bid to limit it or restrict it to include or not include advertising? Like, what would be the process? How would we actually do anything to go forward for here is my, is my question.
You want me to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Mayor, please.
Yes, I, I think government is really not good at retail. I think if we were going to go in a direction, I think it'd be an interesting look at the business and how it functions. I think we would put out an RFP suggesting some locations and see what companies respond. They would be leasing town property. They would provide the service on town property. And the details after that, we'd hear what they were open to, whether it's a lease or, or, obviously, someone would have to pay for the electricity. And, and I would expect the business that was going to operate the charging station would be charging for the electricity in some way and that would pay our electric division. But I'm sure any of these things require maintenance, they require repairs. We're not, we're not, as a government, structured to do that. But I, it sounds as if private, private enterprise is out there and could be very interested in, in one or more sites in town. And the way to find out would be to put out a bid or an RFP and find out.
Right, no, thank you. That, that makes sense or sounds great. It's, it's almost as if, right, it's, it's like little mini gas stations everywhere and that we're just in an opportunity to, to lease out a little bit of our land to, to provide that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow counselors.
Yeah, so I was just looking at the VW grant and I think the portion that closes in April is, is for vehicle funding. I think that the portion that might fund this project is still in the public comment phase, but I'm not positive about that. But I, you know, I, I share the interest in, in putting this out to let a private enterprise, you know, make us the best offer. Next up is Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Counselors Morganstein and Todd for the, the, the work they put into getting this all together for us. Very helpful, thank you. As, as we keep talking about this, it's, it seems there's a lot of different questions that, that pop up in all different boxes. And some are almost lead to some contradictory stances. And I don't want to say contradictory, I didn't mean it that way, but apparently on a surface conflicting viewpoints. I think if we, if we step back, we, we really should think first of all, first of all, why? The, the, the primary question is why would we do this at all? Why, why, why should we put up electric charging stations? Why even entertain this? Before even talk about how? Because if, if, if there's a philosophical belief that it's worthwhile, that can overcome many of the other questions that arise later on. Because then, so it's almost like a value judgment. I think one, I don't remember who is exactly said it, but the con, the, the comment was made, you know, do we want to be in this market? And, and not, because I know that wasn't somebody putting out the idea, but that comment raised, raised this question in my mind. And I, I don't think even I would think it's a good idea to put up electric charging stations because it's a good business to be in for the town. I don't think anybody's going to say that. It's kind of a small version of, do we want to provide internet service? I mean, it makes no sense. Okay, so it, it ends up being, is it a legitimate service, if you will, or action that the town can take? Philosophically, I think it's a worthwhile stand. I think it's a statement. I think it's an acknowledgement of, of many things, but it's, I think it's the town setting a good example. We can be strictly pragmatic about it and acknowledge that it can also certainly draw people to town who would use these parking lots and that would be good for our business. Isn't that fantastic? But I think we, we as a town could say, listen, we are where we are in the world, in the world today and anything we can do to encourage the use of electric vehicles as things get, continue to get better in that technology would be a smart move. We're putting in new parking lots. It'd be almost foolhard, foolish not to take advantage of the opportunity to install a few of these things. That's a position I've taken, it's a position I still hold. So in far as I'm concerned, whatever it takes, we do it. So now if there are some objections to the how, then that leads us to start entertaining, well, how are we going to do this? I, the idea of an RFP makes a lot of sense. I'm trying to think to myself, why would any business choose to put these things up as a business? I don't think they would do it in order to try to make the money off the electricity. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe they would. But I think the company we've been talking to here is the perfect example of how they would do this. This is their means of getting advertising revenue. The advertising revenue is not to pay for the charging station. The charging station is to be a very creative way to have advertising revenue. Like the geniuses that came up with the, the things they used to put up in the men's rooms. Great idea, you know? Yeah. Captive audience, if you will. But, so I think we're going to see private businesses jumping into this in this kind of manner. And when we were, so now we were wringing our hands about the ads. I don't necessarily disagree with Counselor Shortell. Those are big, right, they're, they're, those big robots, big ads. So I suppose from a matter of taste, we could, we could look at that and say, we don't like those. Maybe we wouldn't entertain those. But then the discussion veered off into the First Amendment stuff and all the government's control of our ads. And my question to that is, maybe the answer may simply be yes. Is, is it the same thing as if we, the, the same question arises when we talk about selling ad space on ballfields? Because we are the owner of the ballfield, we are selling the space. And I fully understand Attorney Small's arguments over time about what the questions are and the pitfalls, the things you have to be careful about. But if we don't own the charger, we're not the company selling the ad space, even if it's on public space. Are the, are the same questions there, are the same concerns there? I don't know if that can be answered now, but I think that's a question that needs to be, needs to be addressed. Can we in a contract say, put taste guidelines, if you will, in the contract, say no selling to any of these kind of businesses? Now go sell and do whatever you want. Although frankly, I think the company that operates these would, would, would not want to jeopardize their own standing by putting nasty stuff up, but whatever. But is it the same problem? I could put that out there right now for anyone who might have a, a quick answer to that. Private company selling ads on chargers versus the town directly selling ad space on its ballfields as the owner of the ballfield. Are there the same First Amendment concerns or censorship concerns? Mr. Chairman, Ms. Attorney Small, anyone else want to address that?
I think Attorney Farrell is on the call.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Or Mayor.
But what do you think?
If Attorney Farrell isn't on, I can give you my view of it.
Hi, I am here.
Okay.
To me, it's, it's still town property and I would think First Amendment rights would still be involved. That's a quick question, quick answer.
Hey Jerry, this is Dave Monastercy. Can I offer a few comments on the First Amendment issue?
Sure. Why don't you let us know who you are, why you're here?
I'm, I'm David, David Monastercy. I'm the attorney representing the, the town on this, on the server case and that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
But I can tell you that when it comes to advertising, the First Amendment constraints are not as stringent as in regular speech. You can adopt policies that limit certain types of advertising. So there's a case about five years ago where the MBTA in Boston did not allow an advertisement. And they had, they had a policy that they would not allow any advertising that would target a group or an individual. There is a, a group that wanted to have a, an advertisement. They precluded it and ultimately the courts upheld that ban. So you can limit, when it comes to commercial speech like that, you can put it in a sort of policy that doesn't target any, say, individual entity or any individuals, but it can preclude certain types of general categories. And those will generally be upheld. So that, and that's something that could be fleshed out further for the council, but I just don't want the, the council to think that when it comes to advertising, it's a no-hold-bars when it comes to. it's a no-hold-bars when it comes to having to accept an ad.
Well, that's very, I appreciate that. It's very helpful.
Welcome.
Leads me, but again, but what, where did, what happened there? We found ourselves potentially bogged down on a operational fact issue. But not, do we want to have these? We, it's almost like we already decided, yeah, we want these. Hey, here's a great way to get one for free. Let this company put them in for us. But you know what? They have to sell ads. So now we're going to haggle over what kind of ads. Well, if we decided that it proved to be an untenable possibility, that doesn't mean we don't put them up. Because we've already made the philosophical decision that we think they're valuable. We're just haggling over how we're going to pay for them. So I don't want to see us caught up in that whole thing. Maybe we decide that this company is not the way to go because the ads are too big, or we don't want to get caught up in restricting ads. But, so we move on. As I'm concerned, we should pay for them, but that's another story. And we talked about, so what are our other options? We can install them with our own money. Maintain them with our own money. We can get grants for the hardware and have them installed. And you know that can happen. We could get grants, but then we still have to maintain them. But then we talk about, well, then how are we going to operate them? And I personally don't have a problem with not providing the charges for free. Because that's starting to really get out there. And, you know, the whole community can say, wait a minute. All right, I'm on board. I think this is great. We're supporting electric vehicles. We're supporting the environment. We're even providing the hardware now to do this. But no, I'm not crazy about paying for Jason Zandry's charge every three weeks. Or anyone else's charge, because I don't have an electric car, you know? We're all going to benefit from less fumes, but enough is enough. So I don't have a problem with us charging to charge. Okay, so that's a different decision. We get to that point. We have to talk about, do we want these? How do we pay to put them in? And how are we going to pay to operate them? Frankly, they're just a real big parking meter. In principle, that's all it is. Put in a parking meter. Connect it to the electricity. People put their credit card in and pay for their charge. There you go. Now, that gets us to the other thing. Do we want to try to make money on it? That was the last thing I want to talk about. Because the comment was made, well, should we charge, should the charging fees pay for the equipment? And/or not? And I would say, no. I would say, we make a commitment as a community philosophically that this is a valuable thing, and we do it. And here it is now. This is another service we can provide as a community, and our electric division can provide as a service utility. But you want to charge, you're going to pay for the electricity like everybody else. We're just giving you the means. And I don't think anybody would object to slipping a card in and paying for the electricity. So I don't think we should put these in with the intention of trying to make money. I think we should put them in with the intention of providing that service and charging enough so that we don't lose money. We're going to have to maintain them. And yeah, I guess we're going to have to maintain them. We have to maintain a lot of things in town. Sometimes you make a decision because it's the right thing to do. And I think that's where we are. This is the right thing to do. And I'm hearing a lot of people say, well, I love the concept, but so I think we need to establish what our buts are. And
But with one T.
Yeah, right. Buts with one T. Narrow that down for real so that we know what we should be talking about. Each individual person may have a different thing that they feel strongly about. But as a group, do we think this is a good idea? Because if it's a good idea, for goodness sake, we get get ready to put these in. Right? And I love that we all seem to think it's a good idea. I don't want us getting caught up in operational details now that could sidetrack the whole thing. And frankly, if we can have a partnership with a company that wants to come in and put these in, yeah, we might get caught up in how they plan on operating them. So maybe we seek out the grant money it takes to get these things installed, and we put them up and we operate them. And we charge people for the electricity and that's where I stand on it. But thank you. I appreciate your indulgence.
I think you point out that there's a consensus to go forward in some way, shape, or form. I think
I would also.
No objection to that. I don't think we want, I don't think I hear people saying that we want the town to make money on this. But I would, I think we would probably all agree that we figure out a way to do this that costs us nothing. And I think, to your point, the RFP is probably a good way to figure out how to do that. It gives us the latitude, you know, to find a vendor or a way that would allow us to do this at no cost to the taxpayer. So.
Well, just one thing in response to that, and the reason I mentioned it when we, in response to what the mayor said, I might be wrong, but I think when we talk about an RFP, maybe we should do a little bit more of what was done on our behalf. And look out there. Who's doing these? And what do they bring into the table? We may find out that nobody puts these in as in a partnership arrangement without doing something like this company would propose to do with the ads. They have to make money to do it. And how are they going to make money? Are they just going to do it by upcharging the electricity? Maybe. Maybe they are. Who knows? Lord knows, they could probably do it in Wallingford because electricity is a little cheaper. So they could probably charge market rate for the electricity and make more money in Wallingford. But that's something to consider. Thank you again.
Yeah. There's a question that I have that I don't want to forget because apparently I'm not immune from that. And I see that Tony Bukary is on the call. So Attorney Zandry has confirmed for us that there are charging stations at the train station in Wallingford. And those are, they have to be on our grid in some way, shape, or form. And I'm wondering, Mr. Bukary, if you can tell us how it is that those charging stations acquire their electricity?
Yeah, I'm not 100% familiar with them. I know they're there, but I would assume that they're behind the meter, and they're just metered through like any other customer.
Okay, thank you. Next in line is Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I too am in support of this, but I was watching this all unfold, and we keep on coming back to this signage issue. And I just, I heard something that piqued my ears, and I just, I have to remind my fellow counselors about, you know, Janice did advise us about the Gilbert, Reed v. Gilbert case. I think it was at our last ordinance committee meeting, which had to do with content. So just want to be cognizant of that, that if we're going to develop content-regulated rules with regards to signs, that we may have difficulty. That being said, perhaps we can say that, you know, businesses that are headquartered in Wallingford, you know, could be, and then you're not regulating content. So I just want to throw that out there. The other thing is, the RFP issue, you know, I think we would have to hear from the administration. It seems the mayor is on board with doing something here. But I think, you know, if we work together on what that RFP looked like, you know, perhaps we would meet all of our needs instead of something going out that then came back and had something different than what we had originally anticipated. So I just, I look forward to working together on this. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein. Back to you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, so I'm very appreciative that everyone does seem in principle to be in favor. And Mr. Testa's comments very, very good and prompted me to remember a question of Mr. Bukary from the electric division. So I have asked before, and I never can remember the name of our program where education is done and light bulbs and insulation and such, and there is some money in that. What is that program called? You know what I'm doing?
Energy program?
Yes. So two parts. How much money is in that program? And would something like this be appropriate to have some buy-in from that program toward this?
We get, we collect money. We collect money for that program annually, and we get money from the state. There's nothing in there right now that covers electric vehicle charging. It's typically used for home energy audits, lighting programs for both residential and commercial, commercial, industrial, and residential heating and cooling incentives, as well as hot water heater incentives and any type of process equipment for manufacturing that is more efficient. But I have not seen any dollars specifically allocated for electric vehicle charging.
So in theory, it just doesn't meet the criteria? Or it's never really been investigated whether it could?
I would have to look into it. I don't believe it meets the criteria, but I could look into that and get back to you.
It sounds like it may not. But yes, if you could look, I think that would be great. Okay. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, the next question comes up. RFP, apply for grant. Can we do any kind of a possible action? What action we would like now that we've discussed? What would people like to take as an action?
We can. We can bring this back to us. I mean, we'll have another meeting this month. You know, we have a department in Town Hall that applies for grants for us. We can get more information on the grant. My perception is that, you know, the Board of Ed is participating in an application for an EV, a vehicle purchase grant, and I don't think this qualifies. I think from what I've read on the DEP website, the portion of the program that would apply to this is not open yet. So I think we need more information before we ask if if we're going to participate in that grant. Additionally, you know, it may be that a vendor, there's a vendor out there that can do that for us without our need to participate in the grant. My inclination would be to ask the administration to work with us to come up with RFP specs. And then we can come back. I do have a request for a comment. Actually, we haven't gone to the public before we run away from this. And I do see that Ms. Kofler wants to comment, and there was also Mr. O'Connell. Why don't we let Mr. O'Connell go first if you're still on the call?
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to reiterate what a lot of other people have said in thanking Counselors Tata and Morganstein.
Mr. Powell, your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, 30 Northford Road, Wallingford. You know, I think this is the kind of innovative topics that we as the public like hearing, and I appreciate that all the counselors had a lot to say on it. I also especially liked that they mentioned how it could be especially, these charging stations could be especially attractive for young members of our community and young families because the decline in that demographic in our town in particular has been an issue that isn't always talked about enough. So I, again, appreciated that. I just had a pretty narrow question for Counselor Morganstein in reference to that call she had with the Volta representative. And that would be, I know you said that about 15% of the advertisements, and I know this is just one option, but just to follow up on that. I know you said about 15% of those advertisements would be reserved for the town to use. And the other 85% would go to Volta's sponsors or other advertisement contracts. Do you know if those are specifically for their national advertisement contracts? So like the example you gave was like Coca-Cola, or could local businesses also, you know, buy into or pay for these ads as well? Because my personal opinion is, if that's the case, I think that definitely makes it more incentivizing for us to kind of boost those local businesses, especially when people can see the advertisements essentially within a few miles of those businesses.
So Counselor Morganstein had fallen off the meeting, and she's back on.
Yes, sorry.
Did you hear his whole question? You're muted.
I just, I just made up names of businesses that I could think of. I don't think that they have any preference. He talked about charging stations in California that deal a lot with the movie industry. They're right there. So my impression is that I guess the other question, though, would be to ask, what do they charge for advertising? Because would their charge kind of preclude a small local business? That's a very good question, Riley, and I can certainly ask it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And what did I miss at the end of your, what we were going to do? I'm sorry.
We're taking.
Meeting.
Before I bring it back to the council and we take a next step, we're taking.
We're just taking my vote first. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tata, I see you in there. Did you want to comment now or after the public?
I can wait until after the public. Thank you.
Yep. All right, Ms. Kofler, name and address for the record, please.
Adelaide Kofler, 35 Whiffle Tree Road. I just wanted to clarify for the VW grant. So there are two separate strengths, if you will. One is for replacement of vehicles, which is where I think the school buses are applying for. I'm not sure about the vehicle you mentioned. Is that a school bus or an IT, like a passenger vehicle?
The Board of Ed is participating in a grant to replace a school bus.
Yes, so that is a separate thing from the VW grant program specifically for electric vehicle supply equipment. To my knowledge, they're both at the same time, or the similar time at least, and they are expected to open, the application window is expected to open up sometime in April or May. However, as we just spend a lot of time discussing all the different options, the planning for the application takes quite some time. So I still think if we, if the council wanted to pursue the grant or even thinks about pursuing the grant, it would be very advisable to really look into it now, to get ready for that. And then if I may add, to my knowledge, on the Volta, on the advertisement company, they do offer free advertisement space for town, like for town news or announcements or even messages like, I don't know, something about COVID or what have you. And they do offer, as far as I know, discounted rates for local business. That is all something you would negotiate with Volta. And I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morganstein. You're in the queue.
Eric Morganstein, South Main Street. Again, I just want to say that what we're having tonight is what we're having tonight is really a tribute to a citizen who's really dedicated to an issue and has done a lot of work. And I'd like to just thank Adelaide Kofur for all the work that she's done that this, this doesn't really happen tonight, or hopefully it would have at some point. But I, I think we should all be grateful that this is the power of a citizen being involved. And I'd just like to acknowledge her before I make any comment. The thing that I want to just stress, and people have brought it up in a number of ways, is that we're talking about a vision here. And people seem to be in favor, you know, what, we talk about what do we want to project for Wallingford? What kind of town do we project to the greater community outside Wallingford? What will bring people into the town? And this is the sort of idea, and we could talk about all the different options of how to achieve it, as we should. But the idea of it is that this puts Wallingford in a position to bring people in. It gets people to talk about Wallingford, and it gets us in a position where our businesses can be enhanced. That people say, you know, I went to Wallingford and I was able to go to the restaurant that I really liked and able to charge my car. And what I'd like to add to that is that we shouldn't let our imaginations be limited to the new parking lots. That we should be thinking like Counselor Chertel thought, you know, the possibility of that at a community pool, there is a community pool, which I very much hope there is. Maybe the public library, you know, you think about at least one station uptown. Maybe one going down to Hill of Center Street, lower downtown. You think about, you know, what will bring people here? And the distribution of this, if we go down this road, could really add to the town. I also just want to, just reiterate what people have said. We could look at the ads as this giant monstrous robot that's in the middle of things. But it also poses an opportunity in terms of, I mean, if it's small, you're not going to see, come to the Library Bistro. You're not going to see the WCI posting and promoting the Jubilee 350, two years later. Things like that. I mean, you've got to have some sort of presence to make these advertisements. So it, you could look at it two ways. It could be an eyesore, or it could be an opportunity. And I'd say that I'm kind of putting on my capitalist hat on saying that this is an opportunity to promote our businesses, that I'm surprised you guys aren't looking at it this way. Is that this promotes local business to see our local businesses on these screens, to see the town promoting itself on our 15%. So I mean, there's many ways to go, but think of this as an opportunity. Think about it as a vision of what we want to promote Wallingford as. And what will draw people here and want Wallingford to be either their destination or their home. So that's all I've got to say, and I'm glad to hear what I've heard so far.
Thank you, Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to thank Ms. Kofur. I know she's not looking for credit, but she, she did extensive research. She really educated me a lot on all of the various options. So thank you to her. And then I also just wanted to say, thank you to the mayor for the idea of the RFP. Because I think, you know, I started out by saying this, this really is not a council decision per se. It's more of an administrative decision. And so, you know, we're having a discussion, but the administration is really who, who needs to decide how this will happen or if it will happen. So I appreciate the mayor's idea of the RFP, because I think that's, you know, while we kind of laid out all of these options, if the administration chooses to do the RFP, then, you know, maybe they want to say, here are the locations. We're going to have six of these or eight of these. And we'll get back ideas as to who will do them. Or, you know, maybe there's an idea in there that, that we don't know about. Or maybe we can then pick and choose if we get five back, which is the best fit for Wallingford. So just wanted to thank the mayor for that idea. And to me, that sounds like it's a, it's a great way to go. Thank you.
So I think we would ultimately participate in some way, shape or form in the RFP process. Mayor, isn't that typically something that comes before us because it doesn't follow the standard bid process?
Yes, you know, I, I think certainly I'll talk further with the, the Purchasing Office as to what might be the best course. But whether it's an RFP or a bid or whatever, certainly, you know, we'll, we'll share it with you, with the council before anything would be done. We're just going to need a little time to be able to put together the document. Let me, let me talk further with purchasing and maybe Public Works and Engineering and see what can be put together. It may take less time. It might take more, but before anything would happen on it, it will come back to you.
So I think we have a commitment from the mayor to come back to us.
That's correct.
With something. And then I have two counselors and one more member of the public. Counselor Morganstein.
All right, sorry. Yeah, so yeah, great. Because I was going to reiterate about the young families and the property values and people wanting to move to town, not just the come and visit town. But if we're all on board that we want to do this, I don't necessarily have to say that. Grants were mentioned, and someone said that we do have someone who writes grants. My impression was that when Don Rowe left and was not replaced, we don't per se have a grant writer. Do we simply have different departments when it's different things? Who, who is our grant writer?
In the.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, the, the Program Planning Office has an employee, Susan Schott, who handles a lot of the grant administration. Departments are also involved with grant writing. So it's, it's very much a shared subject matter depending upon what department, what individuals are, are, have the expertise to be able to deal with the subject matter. That's why I mentioned about the Public Works and Engineering as being likely, and, and Electric, of course, as being likely departments that would participate in determining how to structure a, an RFP or a grant, or a, or a, a bid. The, the, the grant, in, in a way, somewhat complicates this. Because the grant the town would receive, and we really don't have the expertise to be putting in any of these things. And I'm not sure how that money and the grant would get to another party or whether, whether even we would be authorized to do that. So I, I'm not sure that app, the application for a grant will, will be the smoothest course for us to determine what's really in the interest of the town.
So if we apply for a grant, I would imagine, if I apply because I want my, do something to my house, I don't apply to put it on there myself. I would imagine that part of the money then goes towards installing it. I, I don't quite understand. I know that grant writing is a very specific skill. And I'm going to kind of stick a pin in as we get to budget season, the fact that we don't have a grant writer. And are we leaving money on the table in various capacities because of that? No harm meant to the people that do, do some grant writing for us. But anyway, so yeah, I wanted to ask kind of at the end of all of this, and maybe I've gotten my answer. Could an RFP and looking at application for grant, something that we asked to push forward with both? But I perhaps have gotten my answer. I'll let the other people who seem to still have a couple of questions speak. Thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, just let me respond by saying, if the town applies for a grant, the town would be committing to installing, by using that money, installing a charging station. And my concern is we have no expertise in that. The Electric Division doesn't do that. Public Works doesn't do that. We have no expertise in it. So our ability to to justify receiving the grant and then not really have a direct route to being able to use the money for, for installation of a charging station, to me is problematic. Whereas if, if we contact businesses, ask for their proposals, their response to a document as them, with their expertise, installing a charging station on public property, which would be subject to a lease or some other agreement anyway, then the people with the expertise in installation, construction, operation, they're, they're, they're there to do that work. Whereas, I mean, I, I think there are a lot of technical questions with regard to the construction, operation, maintenance. At this point, I don't think any of our departments have any expertise in.
And I, I think some of the answers to those questions will be to look at the grant application when it's published. Because that, that'll, you know, it, it may require too specific a program for us to participate with our intended RFP. So we can determine that later. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I totally agree with the mayor on this issue. I think right now we're at the point of putting out an RFP. And those experts may come to us and say, it's not going to cost you anything because there's a grant out in wherever. I mean, they're the ones that are going to come to us and tell us how we can get to our goal, which is to get the electric charging stations. So, you know, I, I don't think we have the ability to do both at this time. But I just want to go back. Somebody said something about the RFP had to come to us anyway. And I just want to remind us all that I don't think we've ever reviewed an actual RFP. What we've done is we've given permission to the administration to utilize the RFP process. You know, and they've argued to us why that's more efficient. But the document that's actually going out, I can't recall ever our agreeing upon the criteria that needed to be met and all of that stuff for an RFP. So that's what I would envision here. So I don't know if procedurally we would have to have that vote to authorize the RFP first. Obviously not tonight, but at a subsequent meeting. And then have that document that we would intend on going out to solicit those packages as programs to meet our goal would come back to us for review and approval. That, that is what I would envision here, based upon our conversations. But I leave that to the powers that be, at least at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yeah, I, just to respond, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything frozen in stone. We, we want everyone to be participating in it. I don't think there's anything that prohibits the, all of us joining in adopting what language would be in a, in an RFP or a bid or anything. And this is not a typical situation. Usually a department specifically knows what it needs. Their expertise goes into it, and it still has to be approved. But in this case, you know, there's, there's nothing that prevents everyone from being part of this process, which I'm happy to be part of.
Yeah, I, I do recall RFPs coming before us with the specs included, or at least rationale for why the department was seeking an RFP instead of a bid.
I totally agree with the rationale. We always get the rationale, you know, that we've done business with this group for years. You know, that it would be more efficient, all of that.
That's a good waiver. That's different. That's different than an RFP.
Yeah, I can't recall an RFP coming before us about specs, but I leave it, you know, we've both been up there a while, so. But I would appreciate being part of that process. Thank you. And I'm glad to hear that the mayor is willing to make us part of that process. Thank you.
All right, we have a quick Counselor Chertel question.
They're never quick. I'm just trying to relate this to some specific projects. So I'm just trying to play this out. So, you know, Pudley Pool, I mean, whether that happens this year or not. But, but that would be an example where that project has gone through planning and zoning. It's gone through inland wetlands. It is approved. It's just not funded. The same is true of the parking lots, Brothers. We use Brothers and we use us, Wood and Kaplan. Those are all sort of ready to go. Those are funded. So we're going to go out to bid. Let's say it comes back. We can do the charging stations. And we can put two at Wood and Kaplan, two at Brothers. But doesn't that, do, do those projects get stalled then? Because now they have to go back through zoning, back through all those regulatory hurdles to, and does, does that increase the price of those projects to put, to put the apparatus in to actually have the charging stations? I don't know. I just wanted to ask, how, how does, how does that relate to those specific projects? Do, do we even know?
Well, Mayor, back, I I believe that given, given the change in what would be the plan, it's certainly possible to have to go back to planning and zoning if we decide to go ahead. So at this point, I have, I, I will check with the departments involved, but I would assume that there would be some delay.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. And, and I know, I think we had asked Rob Baltimore Midas when he, last time he was here, you know, when would you break ground? He, you know, he, he can't really predict that until this, he gets into the, the warmer season. But yeah, I mean, it's not a reason for me not to do it necessarily, but it's, it's, it's a little bit of a concern. But versus, versus putting them in some other lot that isn't, you know, putting them at Town Hall in that lot, you know, I don't know. But it's just, it's just something I wanted to ask. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yeah, I will follow up with it. Certainly, I think it would be, it would be a problem in the Simpson Court area. I, I think that, that would be a problem. However, in the Kaplan-Wooding area or the Brothers, I can find out what, what the construction timetable might be. And, you know, try to piece together what all of these elements would be like coming together in a, in a in a timetable that allows for everything to be done basically at the same time. I, I'm going to have to talk with Public Works particularly.
Okay. Anything further from anyone? I think I'm all caught up on the requests in the chat bar. So if that's the case, we will hear back from the mayor after he's spoken from the various department heads that'll be involved in this. And we'll look forward to participating in an RFP. I'm sorry. One more from Ms. Kofur.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short. Just one clarification. If we were to go and apply for the grant, there is no obligation to actually put it in from the process, from what I know from the electric school bus. That is actually a case where a third party applies for the grant. That would be possible for the charging station as well. However, the private party, if it's not in, in the contract with the government entity, would not get as much percentage from the grant. And if, in our case, Durham School Services, after all, decides, oh, it's not going to work out, and they cannot put it in, there is no obligation. That was made clear to us from deep, actually. So just wanted to clarify that. And the second part, I appreciate very much that the mayor is willing to look into an RFP. If that is appropriate, I would be happy to maybe work on that as well and, and forward all the information I, I sent to the council so far and to the mayor. I'd be happy to help there if that is formally possible. And one more thing, for the RFP, I really would ask that you do not limit that. And one more thing, for the RFP, I really would ask that you do not limit that to the version that the mayor favors, which is, I know we all would, would, would prefer that. If we could find a third party putting it in for us and, and paying us a lease, that would be great. But to be honest, I have found one single example of that so far, and that's still in the planning phase. So I, I don't know. Sure, it would be a great option, but I would ask that the RFP would be broader and not limited to this one version. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. I think we're all set, and we will be moving on now to item nine. And we'll have, if, if we could have a motion to go into executive session for both items nine and item ten, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred six D with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property, and statutes one dash two two five F and one dash two hundred six B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending matter of Server versus the Town of Wallingford.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing no negatives, I declare the council in executive session. If you would kindly leave the meeting if you are not participating in executive session, I would be grateful because I will not have to kick you off. And once the room is clear, I will lock it.
Now be recorded.
Can we have a motion to go back into public session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I think I heard Counselor Fishbein first on the second. You'll get yours later. And I, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. Hearing, then we are back in public session. And can I please have a motion on item number eleven?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize settlement of the pending matter of Server versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, you know, it was a tie. I'm going to give Shortell this one because of his reaction last time. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the council, any comments from the public? Seeing none in the chat bar? I'm going to attempt to call the roll. All right, and I'm just going to go off the screen, so.
Who's screen?
Mine.
Can we just do a voice vote? I mean, does it, is roll call required?
All right, well, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, all aye, the motion passes. There being no further business on the agenda, I am going to adjourn the meeting and stop the recording. Thank you all. Have a good night.
This conference is no longer being recorded.